It never fails, that's the time.
That's right.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting of the King William County Board of Supervisors to order. If Ms. Branch could call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Here. If everyone would please rise and join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all. All right, gentlemen, we have an amended agenda in front of us. If there are no other revisions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made. Second today. Discussion. Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Very good. All right. Next, we come to public comment period. Individuals have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes for a group. If you're representing a group, we ask that you identify yourself as representing one before you begin speaking. And before you begin speaking, please state your name and the district in which you reside. For those that are on the Zoom meeting, if anybody wishes to participate in this public comment period, you can use the raised hand feature to be acknowledged. There's a button on the window that you can use. You can also type Alt-Y or Option-Y if you're on a Mac. If you're on a phone, star nine, and the moderator will unmute you and will get you time to speak. So anybody in the room, please approach the podium. And if anybody on Zoom, again, raise hand to be acknowledged or star nine if you're on the back.
Good evening. Chris Calhoun, District 5. Last, last one to miss the opportunity to speak because the chat feature has been disabled, unable to raise my hand. So I've been in person this month. As a result, we have two months of things to catch up on. I raise illegal expense in this county spend not solely due to the experience that I personally have had with this attorney and the firm, because I believe there are far better sourcing options and outcomes for the tax dollars this county has budgeted for legal services. I have said before, I completely understand the value of an outside firm with industry expertise. Have you spent nearly two decades in professional services for a firm far larger than this little regional law firm that we're working with? In my experience, outside advisors were held accountable for the work performed for their high price tag. I expect the same here. I believe the county attorney, working at the pleasure of this board, reporting to the taxpaying citizens, I'll have an obligation to represent the best interests of the county and its taxpayers. I believe we would get far better service in this county. We were to hire a county attorney to work here in the admin building. For the same price we pay Sanz Anderson for 40 hours a month, we could get 40 hours a week. Sanz Anderson has a place for specialty counsel, not administrative or operational research. It is often the bulk of the monthly expense. To that point, the last two months resulted in over $17,000 in legal fees, of which only $388 were incurred by a paralegal, while the remaining $16,000 were incurred by eight different lawyers at a $325 hour price. To date, only 2.1% of the $304,000 this county has paid to Sanz Anderson for paralegal time. So on to these invoices. My first observation is where is this county attorney? By my observation, we haven't had the county attorney attend this board meeting since March. And since March, we've incurred over $40,000 in fees. In multiple meetings, legal counsel was needed. Like last month, business had to be put on hold in order to get the advice of counsel. This wouldn't happen if the county attorney had vested interest in this position and were co-located in this building. Second, on these invoices, I did see close to $1,000 in fees to deal with a legal matter on the planning commission raised by Mr. Greenwood. Having heard the chatter and having watched the planning commission meeting, there are many questions that were raised. I'm not certain what, if anything, was really to be accomplished by trying to delay vote after this board decided not to keep the sitting chair one more. It would appear to me that motives were either personal or political, and possibly the legal advice provided was just a support and opinion, certainly not the best to represent the interests of the citizen taxpayers. In any event, what's done is done. And I would just ask Mr. Greenwood one question. Based on the advice provided in this matter and other matters over the last two years, if you were spending your own money, would you continue with Sanz Anderson or seek counsel elsewhere? Lastly, I have not forgotten, and I sure hope you haven't, the legal interpretation provided regarding the Dillon Rule and definitions not defined in the state code. I raise this because in short order, you will be voting on zoning ordinance layered with definitions that are not in the state code. I, for one, am still waiting on Mr. McRoberts to explain why definitions are allowed in ordinances when they are not allowed in the food and beverage ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody online, Ms. Branch? Is there, okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Do what I normally do. We'll do a one-minute countdown on anybody online, just to give an opportunity. So everybody online, you got one minute to figure out that button. Again, raise hand, Alt-Y on a PC, Option-Y on a Mac, star nine if you're on the phone. Anybody in the audience, still welcome to come up and begin speaking, but we'll do a one-minute countdown just to make sure everybody who wants to speak has had the opportunity. Fifteen seconds. All right, Ms. Branch, if there's nobody that's raised their hand, we'll go ahead and close the public account. All right. Thanks. Next gentleman is the consent agenda. I'll take a motion on that. If somebody has anything they want to discuss in the consent agenda, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Second today. Discussion. Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi. All right. That brings us to presentations. We have with us tonight All Points Broadband. If we could get them up and ready to begin presenting. Once they are ready, they may begin.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here. I'm just waiting to see the presentation come up on the screen.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jimmy Carr. I'm the CEO of All Points Broadband, and I'm pleased to be back before you again as we near the end of the beginning of achieving universal broadband in King William. Let's go to the next slide.
Yeah, hold on one second, Mr. Carr. We're going to get the volume up in here a little bit so that everybody in the room can hear you. Hopefully, that's sufficient. All right. Mr. Carr, give us, give us a test here so we can get that, that level at a, at a reasonable setting.
Can you hear me now?
All right. That's much better. Okay. All right.
Okay, so I'll, I'll start again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jimmy Carr. I'm the CEO of All Points, and I'm pleased to be back before you at the beginning of the end of King William's journey to universal broadband availability. Next slide, please. So this evening, we're going to cover, cover a few topics. First, just an overview of the project and where we are, and a review of how we got here today, and then a, a presentation of our recommended approach for the county's strategy for the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative Grant Program. Next slide, please. So as you recall, in September of 2020, King William engaged All Points as its partner to develop and execute a strategy to achieve universal fiber-to-home broadband for all unserved locations in the county. Since that time, we have recruited both Dominion Energy Virginia, Rappahannock Electric Cooperative, and the Pawl monkey Indian Tribe to partner with the county and All Points to finally bridge the digital divide. Working with our electric utility partners, All Points has now completed a design for a universal fiber-to-the-home broadband network that will serve all 2,250 locations in the county that are not served by gigabit broadband today or not required to be served by wired gigabit broadband by other providers through related federal programs. One thing that you've heard us talk about every single time we've been before you is that All Points, our networks, the partnerships that we've put together for this project are specifically designed to secure funding through the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. That is the state's primary grant funding mechanism for broadband. This project is no different. Our current application is, we're planning to submit an application with you in the current cycle. Those applications are due in a couple of weeks, and we've designed our network and this project to be eligible for use of the county's ARP funds. And the primary purpose of this evening's meeting is to seek the board's approval of the proposed project and the recommended local match component. As you may recall, a couple, I mean, probably a month and a half ago, we made an interim report, and now we've completed that work and are in a position to, to recommend a final grant structure and a plan for completing the job. Next slide, please. Just to remind members of the board and citizens where we've been. So in, excuse me, in September of last year, All Points engaged King William, excuse me, King William engaged All Points as its partner. The following month, we began networking, designed for the first phase of the project and began seeking funding through various state and federal programs to extend universal broadband in the county. In November of last year, the county, All Points, and Dominion Energy Virginia entered into an agreement to leverage Dominion's investments in broadband through a statute that we call the Middle Mile Statute. In February of this year, we secured, secured initial federal funding to support the first phase of a two-phase strategy for universal broadband in the county. Then in March, All Points, Dominion Energy Virginia, and the Pawl monkey Indian Tribe entered into another agreement to further expand the initiative into additional unserved areas. In May of this year, Rappahannock Electric Cooperative formally joined our initiative with King William. And this month, All Points and its electric utility partners, both Dominion and Rappahannock Electric, have completed network design on a project that will achieve universal fiber-to-the-home in the county. Next slide, please. So the next slide is an overview of the strategy for the county. The overall project that we've developed includes 250 miles of new fiber optic infrastructure that will extend service to all remaining unserved areas in the county. The overall cost of the project will be a little over $17 million, $17.2 million in funding. Of that project cost, All Points will be responsible for securing 9.2 million or 56% of the total project cost. We're recommending that the VADI application seek $5.4 million or 30% of the total project cost. And the county contribution would be $2.5 million or 14% of the project cost. And again, we've designed the project and the program so that that amount is an eligible use of the county's ARP or ARPA funding. Next slide. So in terms of the outcome from this project, the project will result in fiber-to-the-home broadband being available to 100% of currently unserved locations. The network is based on a network architecture called XGS-PON. So that means everyone today is talking about how they want gigabit service to the home. XGS-PON architecture means that as consumer demands and end-user demands increase in the future, we can readily upgrade this network to offer not only one gigabit symmetric service to the home, but in fact, 10 gigabit symmetric service to the home. Customers who subscribe to service would pay a standard installation fee of $199. That fee would include all of the installation activities and the customer premises equipment. So that's all the equipment inside the home that's necessary to take advantage of the service. Our pricing model is, and our standard approach across networks is that the service drop, so that's the final little piece of fiber that connects the equipment on the side of your home to the distribution architecture out on the street, a 500-foot service drop is included. In order to score the maximum VADI points in this cycle, All Points is going to waive long drop charges for the first 12 months. So the first 12 months after your home is passed by our infrastructure, if you subscribe to service in that timeframe, regardless of your drop length, there would be no additional charge above the standard installation fee. After that one-year period is concluded, the, a 500-foot service drop would be included in the standard installation, and any additional length would be charged at All Points's cost plus 10%. We do that on a per foot basis. That's the most fair way we found to keep costs appropriate and cost down throughout a network. The standard rack rate pricing and service terms, and of course, we would vary for this and offer promotions, et cetera, but the standard service term, a big customer subscribing to service would agree one time to a one-year, one-time service commitment. In terms of the service offerings that would be made available, so as the base tier, we would have a 50 by 50, so that's 50 megabits per second up, 50 megabits per second down plan. To give you an idea, that is enough capacity to simultaneously stream in HD 10 Netflix videos over the same connection at the same time with no buffering. That level of service would be available for $59.99, and we would commit to offer that level of service at that price and only increase that price over time in line with the consumer price index. So that's the, the base tier price would be fixed, and the escalations would only occur in line with actual inflation. The other price tiers would be determined by market pricing, but we can show you here the rate card that we plan to offer in King William County. Next slide. So a couple of key points here. So if the county elected to proceed with this strategy, the local match would be contingent on both receipt of the VADI grant award and execution of a separate agreement with All Points regarding the project. We are preparing the grant application to be submitted in this year's cycle, so those applications are due on the 14th of September. One of the things that we are seeing across our business and, and across our industry is that there is a lot of interest in buying and deploying fiber to currently unserved areas. And one of the main ways that we manage that risk is through long-term relationships with distributors and guaranteed allocation of supply. But we are confident enough in this plan and this VADI application's chances of success that as soon as the county's match commitment is finalized and the grant application is submitted, we would begin purchasing fiber to complete this project in the county. In terms of the timeframe, the state has stated that the VADI grant awards will be announced in December. Upon receipt of a successful award, the county and All Points would have approximately 90 days to enter into an agreement reflecting the VADI grant application and for the county to formally accept the grant award. The project for King William would be substantially complete within 18 months, so that's the entire county covered by this project. And I think finally, I've said this to your county before, King William is really ahead of the game compared to a lot of other jurisdictions in Virginia. You all have made broadband a priority and have been focused on whole jurisdiction solution now for more than a year. And in this grant application, we have a very high-quality network and design. We designed it from the very beginning to maximize the scoring for the VADI program. We have very strong partnerships in place, so the second highest point category in the VADI scoring rubric is known as Commonwealth Priorities, and that is a, a marker for the type of electric utility partnerships that we have in place here, and also our partnership with the federally recognized tribe. And the single most important component for VADI scoring this year is that a project represent a whole of jurisdiction solution. That's 50 out of the available 300 points, and, and King William, as you've seen, we do have a whole jurisdiction solution. So with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm happy to take any questions that board members have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Questions? We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Mr. Carr, you've tested the CAMs access. Is that everybody in, that needs to be in?
Yes, we have. The, the county administrator set that up for our team, and I, I know that that's, that process is underway and working smoothly. We're good.
Got it. Mr. Carr.
Yep. The only question that I have, I did pick up that if you initially sign up, the first 500 foot would be free. If it's anything over 500 feet for the first year, that's free also, correct?
That is correct. So for the first 12 months, regardless of your service drop length, all you would pay is the standard installation fee of $199.
Even if it happens to be a half mile or something like that, correct?
That is correct, and that we've done that to maximize the, the points that this project would receive in the state grant scoring process.
So if someone later, for whatever reason, builds a house somewhere, what is it, a cost per linear foot for installation?
Correct. Yes.
Do you have any idea what that would be per linear foot or?
Today, it would be about a dollar and 20 cents.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Carr.
We don't have any questions. Please.
The COGS is working great in West Point. Mr. Green.
Yes, so Mr. Carr, I just had a question on the map you have on page four. I assume that the big, our picture's all grayed out. It's not color, but I guess the basic part that doesn't have any pen drops on it is the area that's covered by COGS, and I was wondering, or not by COGS, or the Atlantic Broadband that took over for them. But I know some of this area right up here along 360, 30, because that's where my neighborhood is. They weren't covered by COGS, and they said they wouldn't come to my house or any of our houses in our neighborhood or beyond because it was the next rev over, and it was only like 50 feet. But it doesn't look like it's uncovered on this map at all. So are none of the people in this lighter area going to be covered? But you said everybody in the county is going to be covered. So you're going to go back and pick up the people that weren't caught by Atlantic Broadband that looked like they might be in this area?
Yes. So our intention, we've done extensive field surveys in the county, and we've also run a, an online survey and done a number of communications. We intended to identify all of the remaining unserved locations in the county and to make sure that they are included. We have the opportunity, as this project goes forward, to tweak that and to make sure that there are no unserved locations that we have missed as part of the project. So I would encourage anyone who is listening or anyone who believes that their, their location is not covered in the project, if they are unserved, they need to go to fiber.allpointsbroadband.com and complete the survey so that we can properly categorize their address and make sure that when we proceed to construction, that location is included in the project.
Okay, thank you. And I guess you can send us that email address. And also, I guess that, the map that you show on that page, we could probably zoom in and maybe look at it a little closer.
Yes. And if, if you go to the website that I gave you, you can see the, the project area in great detail.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Mr. Carr, so just a quick question. When we talk about, you know, the project being substantially complete within 18 months, that's a, that's a good timeline, but I'm wondering how, because obviously, we're, we're kind of including what we had discussed as phase one in this whole of county project. So are, is this affecting the timeline that we've been talking about on phase one, or is that, is that at all altered by what we're discussing tonight?
No, we're adding the rest of the project. It will be one continuous construction effort in the county.
Right. And then when we're talking about substantially complete within 18 months, does substantially complete, is that the fibers built out, or is that actually connecting customers?
That is the distribution fiber. 100% of the distribution fiber is complete. And, you know, we don't know how quickly, you know, customers will subscribe, but if there's a rolling process, we have to put the distribution infrastructure in place. And once the distribution infrastructure is in place in a given area, then we'll begin marketing to customers in that area, and customers can subscribe to service. So the 18-month timeframe is to have the basic network architecture built and in place, and customer installations can, you know, will, will be a continuous thing. That, that just depends on the timeframe on which a, a location subscribes for service.
Right. But at the end of that 18 months, people who wish to subscribe, we would expect they would begin to be able to start subscribing once the virus is in that area.
Correct. We, we would anticipate that the last address is in the county that want to subscribe to service after 18 months would have the ability.
Okay. All right. And then one last question, because the answer of the question that I had about the, the additional charge for the, for the long drop, and you answered the question on that $59.99 because I have that base offering being tied to CPI. Those are other rates. Are those what you anticipate being the, the market rates, or is that a promotional rate?
That is what we intend for the rack rate to be, the non-promotional rate. That would be the rate card at when the, when the network is initially launched.
Okay.
So we would do promotions off of those rate plans.
Right. So this is the market rate. If you do a promotional rate, it would be lower than this.
Correct.
All right. I think that wraps up a question that I had based on the presentation.
Mr. Carr, Ed Moore, and again, do you anticipate any major changes related to the governor's $700 million and the federal trillion-dollar infrastructure affecting any of this to possibly accelerate or, or, or any aspect, to your knowledge?
No, I, I think that it makes the, the fact that the state broadband grant program has been increased by several orders of magnitude takes what was already a very competitive and attractive project and makes it, gives us even more confidence that our application will be funded. In terms of the federal, the, the new broadband infrastructure plan, not the ARP, but the, the new funding, you know, this project would proceed regardless of whether that legislation is approved at the federal level. I have heard in discussions that if that plan is, that federal legislation is passed, that that would be another source that the county could draw on for its local match. But that would be an option for the county, and at this point, there's not, 18 months to get the entire county built is a pretty good aggressive schedule, and I, I don't know that many more changes at the federal level would influence that schedule.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, I agree. I think the schedule is very aggressive, and I'm, I'm pleased with it. Just wanted to be clear on what it meant. Now, Mr. Carr. Now, Mr. Carr, you had mentioned some action from us tonight. What are you looking for for this board to act on tonight?
So we would need the board to approve the submission of a VADI application following the parameters that we've developed and working with the county and now presented to you. And you would not have to actually make the commitment this evening, but by endorsing the application, you are implying that if the VADI grant award is received, that the county would provide the matching commitment that we've recommended.
Very good. So a simple motion is sufficient?
A motion approving the submission of a VADI application with the parameters laid out in this presentation is all that we would need this evening, and then the county administrator could just put a letter to that effect into the application stating that, you know, on this date, the board approved the submission of this VADI application.
Okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion to approve the submission of this and to direct the county administrator to write a letter stating such.
Mr. Chairman, so move.
Any discussion? Ms. Grant.
Hi.
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 Hi. Mr. Carr, thank you. This is, it all kind of comes off as very dry stuff, but this is all very exciting. You know, I don't think we could have, those of us that started the quick committee, could have dreamt at this moment back, you know, three plus years ago when we started, I guess nearly four years now, but
Twenty-sixty?
Right. So, yeah, thank you very much, and we're looking forward to continuing to advance this project. Do you have anything else for us?
No, I look forward to getting a groundbreaking scheduled and seeing you all there.
Very good. Hard hat on.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Carr. That's pretty exciting stuff, guys. So good work to staff and good work to Mr. Moore, who's been doing a lot of steering the ship on this one. This is big time stuff. I think it was twenty-seventeen when we started quick, because I was pretty sure, I remember I was emailing you some documents from the hospital because my daughter had just been born. It's heavy twenty-seven. So that's how I can track that. Otherwise, I'm losing track of her. All right, next up, fire and EMS report.
How y'all doing today?
Doing well. How are you?
Good, well, thank you. We've had an interesting couple of weeks. We've had increased infection and hospitalizations and another period of high COVID at that department. Several hospitals have been on diversion, so we have to go alternate places. They can't receive us. We followed the new COVID-nineteen policy by the CDC, went back to locking down the stations, wearing masks, and were closed to the public. And we do screenings every morning, and we have six foot distances from our crew members and other people when we can. A good thing is the RS-8F grant was awarded to us, and that helps us with new defibrillators for our AMLs, so we're pretty excited about that. The AFG and the SAFR grants have not begun to award yet. We expect awards to the end of August through September, and that's the assistance to firefighter grant and FEMA, where it gets staffing and things like that. The department's been working with a company called Lexipol, and it's produced a hundred and fifty-seven new policies. And with that new company, Lexipol, it gives you the current state and federal guidelines that matches our policies so they can be upheld in case they get challenged in court. State is transitioning from IMSTREN to ESO, which is, we're pretty excited, but the state is going to this system where we can do our fire reports, we can do our EMS reports, and it's just going to be all one place now. We kind of, we have it on IMSTREN, we have other places, but this is, we're going to one place. Mango Hook and West Point have agreed for all three to be on the same page with that ESO. Pretty excited about that. All that trucks are running very well. That's a, that's a big deal. The amount of calls we get now is pretty amazing, but guys, take care of trucks and maintain them. Look at them every day, make sure things
That is the first time I've ever seen that bullet point appear with that wording in ten years.
That's a, that's a long haul, but we're pretty happy about that. It's just a tribute to the trucks that they purchased, you know, years ago. So they hold up really well. We're working with VDEM now. This has been a project that we started. We're meeting with the head of VDEM, and we're looking at an emergency operations program, a COOP program, and evaluating an emergency operating center. What that's going to do for us is that in event of a hurricane or emergency ice storm, we'll have a dedicated emergency operations center that has a backup generator, and we can meet away from the public so we can do our job and do it without, you know, any interruption. So the chief's been working on that. That's been going along. We've had a couple of meetings, and that's progressing really well. Really pleased with that. The last thing I want to talk about, smoke detector program. We kicked it off last week. We're already doing it at seventeen, and that company's door, you know, crew members start installing these smoke detectors. I think that's been a really good program for people that didn't have them in their homes.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Mr. on the, on the EOC and COOP programs, what's your target?
The EOC program? Yes, what we're trying to do is just have an area. We have the infrastructure for it, for the EOC, is where we can get with the police officers, we, social services, and everybody get together, have a place where we can combine all our efforts to have engines or social services or whoever we need maintenance to go to different places during a storm like that, and just have one number where they can call, and we can just defer, okay, you probably need to talk to this person, something like that.
As far as when it's ready for execution, do you have a target date?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I'm sorry. So, truthfully, we're trying to, we're trying to get a tabletop exercise going in the next couple of months where y'all really wanted to join in. I know I probably haven't talked to you about that, but you could see where we are and what we do. And so I'd say probably two months we'd have that, Dr. According to something I read recently, we are part of the plan. You are? Yes, definitely.
The plan.
The COOP.
I have a question. It's more for Steve. In response to the COVID rates, are we looking at in the future, if things don't get better, masking for county offices?
We're, we're looking towards that. We're looking at updating the policy since we've unmasked now that COVID is on the rise again, and we're a high transmission area of updating our policy again to more closely match the CDC guidelines.
What would be the threshold? Would it be a certain positivity rate?
We're already past it according to Right, yeah, no, and frankly, I mean, I tend to remind it here tonight, but that's like, you get in the habit and then you get out of the habit. But I think, you know, we're back to doing it in front of work. Jurisdictions are kind of all over the map right now with how they re-implemented masking and potentially different policy towards vaccinated employees versus unvaccinated.
May I? With the, with the pretty hard, I guess it's a fact now, booster shots, do we have a program in mind that Three Rivers might assist us? Are we going to go back on our own again?
Three Rivers should assist us. I spoke to Dr. Williams last week and about how the ideal time period is to get a booster is eight months after we've received them, and as county employees, they are looking to implement booster shots for county employees.
I got an email when I was leaving work today that there's a call. Whitten's got a local elected official's call.
I didn't open my email.
Right, I just saw it pop across. I didn't even, obviously I didn't open it because I was leaving, and I thought that the date that was on it, the date is
It's Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday the twenty-sixth, nine, nine AM. But yeah, so Dr. Williams is going to be on that call, so I imagine I was something to save that in there, too. I have, that's, I saw one from LA today. Yeah, like I said, I saw it as I was walking out the door, so. All right, I think we appreciate the update, and as always, let us know if there's anything that you guys need to complete the mission.
Chief Breach is buying in on us, and he asked if I would just let you guys know, as far as the EOP and our COOP plan, what we're working with, with VDEM, especially going towards like a tabletop exercise, was our current EOP, we found when we started evaluating it after it was re-adopted last year, it's kind of a template that we just dropped King William County into. So does it really function for our county is what we're evaluating with VDEM. So one of the things that we're going to look at is, and we wanted to invite at least one or two board members to participate or observe, since you're correct, you are involved in if we do have an emergency operation with making decisions, signing checks, things of that nature. But one of the things that we are going to work on simultaneously with VDEM is improving the EOP, but then having all the directors come together with any of you if you're interested and working on what we currently have in place, and then again, working on what we need to update things of that nature. So, and we're hoping sometime in October to November to have a tabletop exercise.
Okay, yeah, when the time comes, let us know. We'll have
Absolutely, yeah.
Some of us there. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Graham with an update on the Commerce Park.
I don't know how much of an update this is, but I did do some checking to see where we were with the Commerce Park. And I know all of you have been out there, and it's currently not a very attractive park, but it could be. A couple of obstacles that we have with that is all the lots that we have, of course, are septic and well. The roads are private roads. A lot of the lots, we have ten lots that are dedicated to septic. We have two lots that are dedicated to drainage. We have eight lots that have buildings on them. And the rest, they're just sitting there growing weeds and other things. Yeah. Of course, the General Assembly passed a bill that extended the land use until July one, two thousand and twenty-three. So of course, our hands are tied as far as making the developer do anything. Did do some checking. Water, public water is not going to be available until we get the new tower in place. And then, of course, water would be available to that location. Talked with HRSD. They're not aware of any easements to run it that way, but that's not to say that it's not there, and they are checking into it. And they are working on upgrading the treatment plant to handle additional treatment. So VDOT, I did talk with VDOT. They want to see additional buildings in there, more than the three. They want plans of what's in there. They do need to bring everything up to VDOT standards before VDOT would accept the roads. So there's a little bit of work and money involved before VDOT would take the roads in place. There are some grants out there. I did check with them. An adjacent locality on one of their industrial parks, they started with something called Go Virginia, and I'm not familiar with it. Somebody was going to call me back, but we've played phone tag. They did get that grant to get utilities in there, but they were not able to get everything into compliance in order to maintain that grant. But they are going to get some of that information back to me. I would like to see the EDA kind of work on this, and I'll be glad to work with them and look for some grants and so forth that may help break that call stuff, bringing utilities in there. Right now, it's all private, so, you know, it's up to them to bring it in, or the county can try to help them bring some funds in to bring those utilities in. If we bring utilities in there, I think it would make it a lot more attractive. It will make more lots available to build in. It could be brought up. It could, it could be a nice park.
Sure, the old locality is that Essex County.
It is.
And that was the range. Yeah. The cost estimate, that was to complete all the road system, correct? The one, one million, whatever.
Yeah.
I would be interested in finding out what it would cost to bring what's there into the state system also. I don't know if we could ask VDOT to maybe generate another punch list. I think the punch list that I had, that they sent me, was just what was there and not the expansion of the unapproved.
It's been a few years as well.
Yeah. I think they said it was like twenty nineteen or something. I don't know when they wrote that on site. It was before I was on the board. And they, they also said it had to be more than three buildings.
And that's in, and that's in section two.
Oh, in the new section, yeah.
There's eight total between section one and section two.
I'm, I'm really concerned about the businesses that are there in the developed area. Soon or later, when that road falls in a state of disrepair, we're going to lose them. Yeah, I would certainly like to see the EDA, see what they could do with grants. I think it would give them a good project.
I mean, I'll be glad to, you know, help with it, but I think it is a good project for them to tackle. It's a worthy project. That development could be nice.
So the other question was, which I asked you, the current owner, if he decides to sell this property, will the new buyer have to bond it? You know, I know what you, you know, what we spoke about, and it looks like it's not a definitive answer in here. So if somebody purchases that property, I'd see that he did, because I think Mr. Paulie owned it prior, and he did bond it. And the current owner ordered it twenty-twelve, is that correct?
I believe so, Mr. Keisner.
He put another bond on it for the same amount.
He did.
So if, if he is still holding, we also spoke of the, I think, the year twenty-twenty-three. If he is still holding that property in twenty-twenty-three, and those improvements have not been made, is that bond money available? And is it available only for section two? Or can that bond money be used to improve the existing entry in there to try to get it into the states?
It was for section two, not section one.
Okay.
And there are some legal issues with that, so I would prefer to talk to counsel before answering that.
Well, thank you. You know, I was the one that was continually asking because I didn't, I really appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Wisconsin, Mr. Greenwood, do we not need to engage the General Assembly delegates? Your history, why was it pushed twice, I believe, in the past? Any idea why it was pushed?
Because the Virginia Home Builders Association is a very powerful lobby.
It was a moratorium, though, wasn't it?
Well, basically, they extended all, you know, land use approvals.
To twenty-twenty-three.
Well, they did it, you know, initially, they did it to twenty thirteen, and then they did it to twenty fifteen, and then they did it to twenty seven, and then they did it to twenty nineteen. Because that's what the gentleman that were coming up here before fussing about the park were frustrated about, is that, you know, they would come and they would say, well, you know, these improvements need to be done, and there's a bond. And somebody at the county would look at the date and say, okay, well, we can pull the funds on, you know, July one, twenty fourteen, and then we can start doing the work. And then the General Assembly would pass a law, and it would go, and then they'd say, well, you told me twenty fourteen, and now you're telling me twenty seventeen. And it's because they just kept pushing it out and pushing it out. I mean, you gotta, we're talking about permit approvals that could be from, you know, the mid, this is from the mid-two thousands. You got some permits that are older than that. The only reason the General Assembly did that is because they throw logic out the window when these lobbyists come, and they just do whatever.
Why don't we try to engage Mr. Parks and PDC to work with our PDC lobbyist next General Assembly? He's supposed to be a very smart person. Do we have to wait until the next election in the event that we waste our time with the current target?
Well, here's the thing, it's set to expire currently in twenty-twenty-three. I don't think you're going to find any appetite for the General Assembly to rescind that date to make it retroactive. You've got to work to make sure that they don't extend it again.
Exactly.
The problem is, it's a three hundred and twelve thousand dollar bond, and the estimate was well over. The problem is, is it's a $312,000 bond, and the estimate was well over $10,000.
But, I mean, it's, it's not enough, but
As far as the conduit to Go Virginia, I think at PDC might be the conduit.
That's our, that's our entry point of Go Virginia, and I mean, a lot of these things they're looking at, at, at regional type projects as well, so, I know Ms. Povar, when she was at MPA, was working on a survey of these different industrial parks, and, and, you know, since she's left, I'm sure that work is probably stagnated, but it might be something they pick back up once.
I have a report.
Right.
Let me go back and dig through my
Because it was something they were looking into, was doing a regional Go Virginia style application to do some industrial park improvement.
So, there was a survey that was completed, wasn't very comprehensive, but it gave us an idea that they were looking at it.
So, yeah, I think, I think it's, we can, certainly, we wanna engage the EDA, it's, it's probably, it's definitely worth our time to engage the PDC, because they, they will know everything there is to know about Go Virginia, I know a lot, but they know more, and they know how it's been going for the last year since I've been kinda out of that game.
And next, it's supposed to get back with me, somebody named Heather, we played phone tag today.
Okay.
But evidently, she is, she has a lot more information than what they were able to give me on this Go Virginia, and why they were not able to bring everything into compliance.
This is just here to say, too, what I heard through the break, then, was they needed a certain amount of acreage in that industrial park, and they were actively trying to divest some of the joint property, and, and we might run into the same thing here, because that industrial park is probably larger, what is this, 38 acres, something like that?
They have 81 acres on that one.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, they have quite a bit more acreage already, but they were trying to purchase more property there, and, you know, whether that was factual or not, I don't know, it, they needed a certain amount of acreage, is what I heard.
Well, but again, the PDC will know everything about that project, and what went right, what went wrong, uh, because I can guarantee you that they were, they were working together on that, um, because since, you know, since MPA's kinda gone stagnant, the PDC has resumed their role of being the gatekeepers to, to Go Virginia, so.
Thanks, thanks.
Yes, I'd like to mention something like to you and I know, we had talked about, because it came up for sale a while back, and the county was even thinking about buying, but that was wondering now that we started bringing over about the EDA, and the EDA, that's one of the things that the EDA does, so most of them, they can buy properties, why, maybe couldn't they buy the property, I thought it was gonna go for like $100,000.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's wrong.
But then, like you said, maybe then the bond doesn't transfer over, so then, I guess they would be responsible for creating a new bond?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what we have to talk about.
That, that, oh, you know, I, I don't know, we've, we've never really floated the idea of us owning that property, and, and again, I don't know if it's a realistic proposition or not, so that's, you know, I, I think probably, maybe the preference would be for it to be in an interested private owner's hands, uh, you know, with our assistance and having things where they go, more so than, than us owning it, I would think, but I, I would like this to be a, a jumping off point to getting some answers and making some things happen there, because we've been stuck in a stasis for a long time.
It could be a nice development, and it's been sitting pretty, I mean, we have a couple of businesses in there, but for the best part, it's a vacant park, so, I'd like to see it full.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's get the ball rolling on this, and let's engage the EDA, and let's engage our regional partners, and let's see what we can, let's see what we can
Who's gonna engage, Mr. Hudgens, or?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you normally go to meetings, but I'll be glad to
He's the secretary.
Sounds like a good partnership.
We, yeah.
Thank you. It just seems like it's such a core element of, of bringing businesses to the county, or if you're just gonna keep, keeping it down.
Well, it's just been such an attractive prospect of us getting involved with, because frankly, it's private development, but at this point in time, it's pretty clear that nothing's gonna happen with the, in the, in the current ownership situation, so, if we can make some things happen, that would be good. Okay, next up, we've got this journaling with unside, unassigned general fund balance information.
Good evening to everyone. Information presented this evening is for informational purposes only, no action is being requested by the board. The annual unassigned fund balance reported in the CAFR for fiscal year 2020 was $6,364,785. The unassigned general fund balance is the remaining balance of revenues minus expenditures in the general fund. Best practice recommend maintaining an unassigned fund balance of no less than two months expenditures as a minimum. As demonstrated in Exhibit A, the county unassigned fund balance is in line with this minimum recommendation. Exhibit A also outlines the history of the unassigned fund balance reported at year-end from fiscal years 2010 through 2020. We are currently working on wrapping up expenditures and revenues for fiscal year 2021 to determine year-end actuals. We have established deadlines for all fiscal year expenditures to be submitted by departments and expect to have received all remaining funds to the county for fiscal year 2021 by September 1st. I'm, I just, I know, um, the unassigned fund balance, I just wanted to kind of let everyone pay special attention to how we have, you know, we did, it, it has grown, and we are in a very stable condition right now. When you look at the prior years, where you do see a low unassigned fund balance, you do have to keep in mind that we were actually at that time happy to take out loans to make our payroll, too, so I don't want that to be misleading to anyone to look at that and say, well, we were surviving with 1.1 in fiscal year 2010, but keep in mind, we were not able to make our payroll without having to go to the bank. Are there any questions?
No, this is exactly where I wanted, to kinda see where we are, and have a demonstration of, of, you know, the purpose that that fund serves, uh, you know, you can see its, its growth at certain times, collections during the year, its production as we utilize it to cover those operating costs when we're not collecting money.
And that'll be helpful with, um, later on, when Ms. Bancroft talks to you about changing dates of payment due dates, too, that you can actually use this as a tool to kind of see the fluctuation of how each month it has gone down, gone up, this, and I did wanna know, we, this does include what we pay out for the schools also, when we send the funds over to the schools.
Does this affect their overall credit rating, the Dunson Bradstreet?
Yes, it does. It does.
So, healthier?
Yes, yes, and that is something that, um, gosh, the gentleman that we bring down here from Davenport will always come in, and every time he talks to you guys, he just says, your unassigned fund balance looks good, yes.
Can we put it on the yellow side?
Okay. Exactly. Okay, now, Mr. Hudgens, we're gonna discuss the All Points Broadband Contract Responsibilities.
Good evening. I'm sure you're aware that the All Points Broadband Contract Cooperation Agreement was initially signed by the EDA, the EDA would prefer for the county to take over the responsibilities and duties of, of that contract, perform contract administration, get the updates, they would prefer the county do it instead of the EDA. We verbally said that was fine.
Right.
EDA's already signed it.
No problem, no problem.
Right.
I think we had initially set things up under the EDA because of, you know, uncertainty of how funding streams would work back when we started the Quick Committee back in the day, but I think the Board, uh, the Board of Supervisors has done the heavy lifting on it, so, and it's, well, it's our staff, right, even though I guess you technically EDA staff, too, but it's weird how that works, um, so that's, that's fine with me, you need us to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi, all right, you're still up here for Motorola Project Ground Lease Agreement with Kingley County Public School.
So, with the Motorola radio system upgrade, a part of that project has been utilized, the cell tower at the high school. As the project began, we were working with WHRO, who owned the tower itself, um, to get all the information we needed on the tower to be able to put the equipment on it, we were having a hard time getting that information, the WHRO wasn't actually using the tower anymore, hadn't been using it for years, so they said, fine, you can have it, so, we took it. We knew at the time that the schools actually owned the property, that the, the land that the tower is sitting on, that we should have an agreement with the schools put in place to guarantee access and all your legal rights to go with that, but it was put off at that time, and now we're pressed into, we need it now, because the bank needs to, uh, we need to draw funds from, from the bank. Okay. Any highlights? We
Negligible base rent, the revenue share, who's getting the 20% of the revenue share? That's what I was
The school will be getting 20% net revenue, so, whatever minus our maintenance, the school already passed this, they voted on it, school board did last week.
All right. Staff supports it? Yes. All right, I'll, it's an admission to approve the agreement.
So, move.
Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. Once more, reassessment oversight strategy.
As the Board requested at the last meeting, and pertaining to the discussion on the reassessment when it was first canceled, I've looked into the strategy that we could possibly utilize to have citizen input, oversight, further oversight, and engagement, and what I've done is I've scoped out possibly what a Board of Assessors would look like, and that is put forward in the state code on how to do, how you, locality might do an assessment, and I've also scoped out possible just advisory committee, which would also be a panel of citizens appointed by the Board, but unlike the Board of Assessors, a committee, advisory committee would not have authority over the actual land values, and reassessment, they would be advisory only. I've asked Mr. Pearson, Fred Pearson, to be here tonight to answer specific questions on that, I've also, I believe, Mr. McRoberts is on to answer legal questions as to who's got authority, and, really, I just wanted to get your input, which direction to go with this, and once we have that discussion, I would like to proceed with the other topics on, in this memo about oversight, contract administration, and possible future in-house assessor. Just to clarify, Mr. Pearson, Pearson Appraisal Service did put in the only bid, or only proposal to our reassessment RFP. Very good. All right, Mr. Pierce, good to have you with us.
I'm Fred Pearson, Pearson Appraisal Service, pretty pleased to have an opportunity to bid on Kingley County's property reassessment. You know, considering what the county's been through with the reassessment process, in my proposal, I highly recommended a Board of Assessors. Normally, I don't recommend a Board, a Board of Assessors, but I think it'd be good public relations to either have a Board of Assessors or some type of committee that oversees the reassessment. A Board of Assessors is, are, statues in place for that, it has to be three to five members, they have to be property owners here in the county, and they have charge of the reassessment, I would do the appraisal work, I do the sales analysis, I do all the field work, and the Board of Assessors can be involved as much as they like, or as little as they like, but when we hold the hearings, they'll be available to assist us with the hearings, they will make a decision on if a property should be lowered or raised. Anyway, I recommend a Board of Assessors, I think it'd be good public relations for the people here, if you don't have a Board of Assessors, I'd be happy to hold the hearings, sign the book, get to complete your reassessment, your reassessment, you're gonna get a large increase, based on the ratio as of January 1st of this year, you're at about 65% of market, so you're looking at about a 50% increase right there, and your reassessment will not go into effect until January 1st, 2023. But my objective is to appraise property at market value, make sure everybody gets a fair and equitable assessment, and you don't have to make a decision right now. Right now, we're gonna get started, you've got new software, the most important thing is make sure that data's converted over to, to that software correctly, it's gonna take us about two months to check it, to make sure it does, so I would say sometime around the first of the year, you may wanna think about it.
Okay. You know, in, in state code, I see that, you know, it spells out the membership of that Board of Assessors in a pretty formal way, and they've also got some, you know, pretty formal responsibilities, but do you think it's advantageous to have that as it's spelled out in state code, as opposed to having a more informal, over, you know, advisory board?
I, I just think that's up to you, but yeah, what I would recommend, I think when some people come in and talk about their assessments, if they got property owners here in the county, I mean, normally, I do it, it's not a problem, but since you've had problems here in the past, I think they receive that a lot better, and what you may wanna do is take a little time and think about it, talk to some of your property owners in the county, see what they think.
I think, I think the agreement is certainly that we want a, a body that is appointed to assist or oversee or advise on the, the reassessment, certainly, I think we just need to, you know, agree on what we think the best method is, either a, you know, the one that's spelled out in state code, or one that we kind of play out our own.
On behalf of the Board of any committee, on behalf of the Board of Assessors.
Mr. Pearson, the, I would assume reading that a, a Board of Assessors would have certified assessors on, on board, would that, is that a?
Well, you can have me be your professional assessor, too, it's just whatever you like, but your Board of Assessors, they just have to be property owners here in the county.
It doesn't, it doesn't list any qualifications.
Right.
Have you had experience with this before?
I have.
Yeah.
At one time, pretty much every county had a Board of Assessors, in the last 15 years, no, since, they, they came over appraisal certification, and being certified, having certified assessors, they've gone less and less Board of Assessors.
Do you, do you, have you ever had an experience with backlash because the Board of Assessors were not deemed qualified?
I have not.
You have not?
Have not, but I, but I would, you know, if I see anything that's not proper, I'd definitely report it to the county administrator, but I, usually, they work together as a team, and it usually works out real well.
So, I do see, this is contractor may sign the land book, is that your option?
No, I will sign the land book, either way. I have no problems with that, I'm gonna do the work, I'm gonna do 98% of the work for the Board of Assessors, if you have one, the only difference is, they will have oversight on the values, if you have another one, they may look at performance of the contract, but it would not have oversight of the values.
You will make your recommendation to the
Oh, yes.
The committee or the board?
Yes.
For value.
And
Yes.
We will still have the Board of Equalization
Yes. You will.
So, I guess you have no experience at all with the reassessment advisory committee? Have you ever seen one of those?
Yeah. Usually, they have a contract administrator, that's, and that's who we report to, I, I don't know about advisory committee, but I have no problems with that. I, you know, we're supposed to meet with the county, county administrator as needed, probably at least once a month to assess what's going on with the contract, but I have no problems with, I have no problems with anybody seeing any work that we're doing, I have no problems with, uh, it, uh, once we get started, target, be around the first of the year before we start doing our I have no problems with, once we get started talking, around the first of the year before we start doing our first sales analysis, talking about values in general, farmland, homes or what have you. We appreciate information, but I don't talk too much about individuals' properties and their assessments. There'd be a time to send notices out, we handle that. If somebody has something in particular about their property we need to know about, yes, we want to know.
That's great, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just wondering, will you be able to use any of the information from the previous assessment? Are you just starting from scratch? Think thing, yes.
No values, no values. We're looking at data. Just like the sketch of the house, the square footage of the house, outbuildings, land classifications. I want to first make sure all of that comes across properly.
Right.
Once I'm sure that's across properly, we're set to go. I can set the values, I'm not worried about that.
That's what I'm not worried about either, it's about the fact that the pictures weren't taken, that the sites weren't visited. People's stuff was there that's not there, things are not there that are there, so you will make sure-
We will be visiting each house, we're gonna leave a door hanger on the door. We're gonna take a picture of the house, a couple of pictures of the house, and we're gonna take a picture of every outbuilding we can see.
And we can hold you that-
You can, you can hold me to that.
Thank you.
Also, unimproved parcels, will they be physically visited or-
If it's improved, yes. If you got unimproved, it may be hard to get back off the road to see them.
Because I know in the last assessment, the assessor said that it was like a close to 6,000 unimproved parcels and he didn't visit.
I don't think it's going to be anywhere close to that. But we're going to go to every house, every improved piece of property. You have pictures of the house and pictures of the outbuildings. You know, occasionally people ask us not to come on their property, and if they ask us not to, we won't. But, you know, and we'll make a note on our card on that. And we still try to give everybody a fair assessment. But anyway, yeah, we're gonna go knock on the doors, we're gonna leave a door hanger. We're gonna look around the house and we're going to take pictures, at least two pictures of the house, and take a picture of every outbuilding we can see. When you take a picture, there's no question about whether you go to the house or not. You take a picture of the outbuilding, there's just no question. I deal contracts, I'm doing one right now, they didn't have it in the contract. I'm putting it in there anyway, because I don't want anybody to say I didn't go to the property.
Thank you. Okay.
And then, you know, we'll hold hearings and, you know, we want to listen to people and we do the best we can. If we've got a mistake, we're going to change it. We've got a mistake in a whole subdivision, we'll change it. We just want to get it right. We want to do this way that we praise property at market value and upset the least amount of people.
Well, all right, well, we intend to make a decision on which one of those two methods we, we want to go with. I'm certainly ahead of the end of the year.
Sure.
Got this information here, we'll continue discussions with, with our staff and interested members, and we'll have a decision for you, so you know what you'll be working with.
Right.
But yeah, we look forward to having a good product at the end of this.
Do my best. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Like to say that one of the options under the more informal advisory committee might be to use a number of members of the former board of equalization who have expressed interest and already received training in making sure this assessment goes smoothly. Right. So the thing that I find least appealing about what's in state code is the limit on the number of panels, right? Because you're limited to three. All right, and I didn't see anywhere else in the code section that said three or five or seven, it just says three, right? That's what I saw as well, it said three. Okay. He left. He said there could be as many as five. So let's, all right. Well, we have Mr. McRoberts on the line specifically to answer these questions. So let's, I don't want to belabor the talk too much because we're ready to do some more research. But if Mr. McRoberts is on the call, if he has any more information on the board of assessors that's spelled out in state code and any flexibility we may have as to the number of panelists we can add to that body.
Well, good evening, gentlemen. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I read exactly what you do in the statute, and it says three. I will say though, that, you know, having not really researched it recently, I mean, I've, I've known boards of assessors that had more than three. So, you know, I might have to look into where the authority is to have five, but certainly I see the same statute you do and it says three. So, you know, that's my opinion until I see something different.
All right, well, let's find out, because I think if we can, oh, this Funkhauser has done, has an answer for us. Hello, come to the microphone please, so they can hear you, cyberspace.
Mr. Hodgins cited code 58.1-3271, and that is for annual and by annual reassessments. There's a code 58.1-3275 for general reassessments that reads a board of assessors of not fewer than three members. So if you look at the correct code, you can have more than three members.
Great.
Can I ask a question? If, if a citizen serves on the V O A, can they also serve on the board of equalization?
No.
So they will be, they will be eliminated from the board of equalization.
And so if you look at code 3275, the board of assessors cannot be appointed until July 1st of 2022. So you have plenty of time to decide whether to use a board of assessors or just the regular contractor, the reassessment contractor. You can take this time and see if citizens are interested and the qualifications of these citizens that would be willing to participate before you decide. But like Mr. Pearson said, it's not something that needs to be decided today or next month, you have considerable amount of time to decide whether or not to use a board of assessors or just the general contractor. But like Mr. Pearson said, from a public relations standpoint, a board of assessors would be a good move for the county, especially when people's values are going to be going up, you know, 35 to 50%.
Thank you.
Yep, thank, thank you, Ms. Funkhauser, that's absolutely correct. 58.1-3275 is more general statute, and it does provide for flexibility. You know, as I said earlier, I've known boards of assessors that had five, seven members, so it's certainly, certainly permissible.
One, one more question for whoever wants to answer it. As far as the date, it says the assessor shall be designated on or after July 1 of the year immediately preceding the year in which the general assessment of real estate is required to be made. Now, Ms. Funkhauser indicated that that may be July of next year, but the assessment will be going on next year. So does that, does that mean we can do it this year? Or basically now that, now that we have an assessment that will be underway?
Mr. Pearson will be working on the reassessment and gathering the values once the board of assessors meets. It's not like the board of assessors is going to look at 11,000 pieces of property and say, okay, this is a good value, this is good value. He's doing a market analysis, a sales analysis. He'll say, in this neighborhood of West Point, average prices have increased 35%. These values in this neighborhood, farms of this size have increased this much, waterfront is- So they'll be looking at general properties that have same characteristics, not 11,000 pieces.
Okay, so if this statute is preventing us from appointing a board of assessors before July 1 of next year, you're comfortable that that's sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, that's the way I read the statute. Mr. McRoberts could certainly look at it closer and see, I read it, the reassessment values take effect January 1st, 2003. So the year before would be January 1st, 2022.
All right, if we could just get some clarity on that, so we know kind of what our timeline is on when we can actually empanel that.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a look at that. I think that Ms. Funkhauser is probably correct, but that doesn't mean that you can't have your groundwork done. You're certainly going to have to presumably reach out for people to serve on this board. You're going to have to identify willing participants, et cetera. The other thing is Ms. Funkhauser is correct in the process. The process is going to be going on for some time, and Mr. Pearson is going to be doing, you know, all of the legwork, the research, the putting together, the sales study, et cetera. The assessors are really going to be then receiving his information and evaluating it and holding hearings. And certainly that's not going to be happening until the latter part of the year, you know, beginning of the year.
Right. Okay, all right, well, we'll continue, we'll make a decision on this soon, but-
Mr. Chairman, one of the, one of the duties or responsibilities we look at the citizens committee to do is to prep the community, prep the citizens, educate. And that can be done as soon as the committee is formed. Perhaps an advisory committee can be formed that could transition to a board of assessors.
Into the board of assessors, that's an idea I had as well. So a thing to think about, can we, because yes, there's several facets to this that we, that we were kind of envisioning for this, this body that I think the interested members had talked about doing. One was outreach, another one was oversight of, you know, the, the field work, validating, validate necessarily, but ensuring that the field work's being done, making sure the sites are being visited and the pictures are being taken and things like that. So I don't know what the timeline is on that work in the, in the scope of the project, if that's going to be happening after July or if that's happening before July. But, you know, that's, that's one thing that I think us and, you know, the people that were discussing the formation of this type of oversight body were interested in being involved with as well. So let's get some clarity on the project timeline, when the firm will be doing what step. All right, and especially an eye toward when they're going to be in the field, and that data is going to be coming in. Let's talk about whether or not we can empanel an advisory committee with the idea that that would convert to a board of assessors if we're time limited to July 1st of next year. And, you know, anybody's recommendation on whether or not they think that's necessary or unnecessary as well. But I, I, I don't necessarily like the idea of dropping a committee into the middle of this, you know, without having an established relationship with the firm and, and, you know, having then also the firm's work being disrupted by having to catch up. Right, a committee.
I think it was in both of my presentations, I guess, or ideas, scopes. I was envisioning that these groups would be meeting with the, with us, with the appraiser throughout the process, so it's not just, okay, 11,000 parcels.
Yeah, so I think we're on the same page, so let's just see what our very best options are, and let's try to have a decision made, you know, before Christmas certainly, maybe around Thanksgiving at the latest, so that we can start then handling it. Because if we're, you know, we go around where we have something up, you know, up and running, you know, beginning of the year, we need some time.
You want to wait that long?
We don't have to, certainly, but, you know, before you know it, it'll be here, it's already August, so.
So much work that needs to be done.
I'm fine doing it before that, I was just saying, I'm trying to give what, you know, a reasonable timeframe to deal with the other business that we've got to deal with, figure out, you know, get answers to these questions and make a decision at the timeline, but will still give us time to panel it and have them up and running. But if we can make a decision before that, all for it to.
One thing to consider also is you're putting an awful lot of responsibility on this, who this team turns out to be for compensation.
We've got to work that.
Are they going to be compensated?
We've put some questions out to surrounding jurisdictions, anyone that has had a board of assessors, just to what their compensation levels were.
We have, has there been, maybe this, has there been any request for clarification on Mr. Pearson's proposal? Yep. Do you intend to have any request for clarification? There was some areas in his proposal that were, he didn't state that, the art piece of the contractor shall, he didn't necessarily come back and say pass, will, those kinds of little things are, could end up-
We've had one meeting with him where we've gotten some clarifications, but some others, questions have come up since then. And we'll have another sit down. Anybody? All right. Progress. All right.
All right, and so-
Questions for progress.
He will be beginning September.
Yeah.
Staffing in office, so he'll be taking calls. I would like some further guidance from the board in naming the contract administrator for the reassessment. The contract administrator serves as the point of contact to the contractor, staff, whatever board that we have, and gives direction to the staff here in the county that is working on it. So this person should have access to and authority over the staff that is doing the work as well as access to the information that is part of this. That's why I feel like it's, a lot of localities use the commissioner as a contract administrator. On the other hand, county administration is great with making sure it's running smoothly and doing, being part of progress reports and making sure everything's going. But the way things are set up currently, county administration does not have access to real estate, and the staff that we had budgeted for the assessment is put in the commissioner's office.
In the, in the previous contract, the county administrator was the liaison between the board and the contract. Correct. Is, and I do know that commissioner revenues are sometimes, Karina, are you? Is that something that you were comfortable with or you guys?
No. The contract administration, I'm very uncomfortable being named contract administrator for a contract I don't have complete control over. The board is going to decide if there's a board of assessors, the board is going to decide if there's a advisory committee. The board gets to decide how much staff there is. Already, I know you're going to have to hire a part-time person to handle the board of equalization, staff and minutes and scheduling. And Mr. Hodgins said, oh yeah, we'll hire a part-time person. You know, I've already taken back real estate and I have, right here, you asked me if five and a half, you know, two and a half more people would be enough to fulfill my responsibilities. And I said, yes, you know, transfers, new construction, split offs and land use. Then you approved five. Now you want to take, I have an assessor's office with two full-time employees, and now you're going to say I have to use one of those full-time employees for the reassessment? I mean, who's going to do the transfers and the new construction and the split offs and the land use? So I'm very wary of taking a contract down, but I don't have the responsibility.
That's fine, you know, if, if, he's our contractor, right?
Yeah.
He's our contractor, right, we're paying him.
I mean, I've already done a lot of prepare for this reassessment. I've like converted all the land cards to PDF from Bright, I've converted them to Excel. I've already printed out a whole bunch of information on Vision to give to Mr. Pearson so he can be familiar with it. He's going to go to training with us in Tappahannock and the new system. So already working very hard on this reassessment contract to make sure that it is successful. And I plan my staff and I will do everything we can to help and make sure it is successful.
Thank you. And so for me, we can make it work.
I guess my only concern is that these items were budgeted into the commissioner's office, and do we need to do a budget adjustment to take professional services out? Or any staffing, two staff were sent to her office for assessment purposes.
Let's not assume that, but let's, let's talk about how we make it work, because we've got to make it work. Okay, so let's move forward assuming that administration of the contract will be on our side of the house, and we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have anything else on that? Okay.
All right, one other point I would like the board's input on is of those two positions were budgeted for, to the commissioner's office. One's been hired, one is soon to be hired. Is it the board's intent that we would have in-house, whether it's under the commissioner or under administration, in-house assessor in the future? And should we be working towards one of these people that is being hired to work with the appraiser on a path to being this in-house assessor?
I'm going to get the board's input, because, you know, we had, we had certainly set the path. I'm going to get the board's input, because you know, we had, we had certainly set the path years ago to have an in-house assessment. So we laid some groundwork, but then that did not come to fruition. And I would imagine at this point in time, with the years that have gone by between then and now, that we're pretty far off from having that plan being a workable one. The plan that we had laid out in twenty seventeen.
Right, but do we want to embark to begin taking the first steps again?
Would certainly be my goal, after listening to some of the comments on Friday evening, that it would be my goal to bring it in-house. Just to bring, provide continuity, fluidity, and just stabilize this whole process.
I agree with in-house, but. We wouldn't start doing it in-house until, what, twenty twenty-three?
Whatever the next.
Right, it would be after that.
My comment is, my, the reason I'm asking now is when we're about to hire somebody to work with the assessment. And that I know that a good part of becoming a, an assessor is that you have to have hours in the field with the appraiser. Is that something that we even want to look at now?
Let's say yes, because if your going to, your goal is to get an in-house assessment, and I still want to do that too, that's always been my goal. Let's do that, just trying to find somebody to do the assessment, always, and it's always a problem. Once we finally get it all turned over to the county, the county has full control of everything, will know what's going on, it'll be easier for us to update everything. Ms. Funkhauser will be, who are present at the position at that time, she's already done a lot of work, everything will be updated, maybe all the cards will be done. Everything will be in order, then, right now, it's just so much of a mess, I think we should put a little more in the budget to have that person. We start looking into it, work with them, I mean, if it takes more people to do it.
We, we would go back to the two years, because if we have it in-house.
We do it annual?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not every.
I don't know.
But the, the thing, Mr. Hodgins, I'm, I would be worried about is hiring someone for something that's going to happen in three years. The, our ability to retain good employees is questionable sometimes.
That's true, too.
And, but I would say that, my personal opinion is that the office itself, that should be a goal for us to work towards, who to be determined. Mr. Chairman?
I think, I think right now, our, our resource and effort and focus needs to be on making this assessment successful. And so whatever we need to do to make this assessment successful, I think is what we need to have our, our whole focus on.
Okay.
Because, you know, the idea of bringing it in-house, I'll feel a lot more comfortable with once we prove that we can outsource it effectively. Okay, so that would be my, my opinion for, for right now. That, that, that may not be the big sweeping vision that we would like to see, however, with our recent experience. I just, I see what happens if we don't have whole focus on the task in front of us. Because remember that, that kind of created the, the beast last time, and we were going to roll that into what was going to be.
Like, one foot out of whack, or moved it out first, and then, but.
I understand, I, I know, and I know that this is different, but I don't want it to become too similar.
Okay.
That we, that we have a, you know, that we, we shoot ourselves in the foot, so.
It was also a functional thing, software, the packages are totally different, like.
Right, right, but I'm just talking about, it's how we, how are we thinking about how we are, are hiring this and treating this higher in this moment? And right, we need to focus, right?
Got it, okay.
All right, okay. Budget amendment for the schools, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four.
Right, so the schools have requested additional funding, well, to use their reserve funds. They've identified a pressing need for roof replacement, canopy replacement at their kitchen, and as well as. The grease interceptor that they had already gotten funding for, at budget time. The quote has come back that actually it's going to be more than what they initially wanted to use, because HRSDP said, no.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the twenty, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four. Any discussion, Ms. Branch? All right, now we get Miss Funkhauser for resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five, setting PPTRA.
Good evening again. I wanted to start off with some good news. Our new software is finally working, and I was able to issue ninety-five supplemental bills for new construction and real estate. Add fifteen point six million dollars to our real estate tax rule. And bills totaling over a hundred and one thousand dollars are going to be issued September first, and we do December fifth of two thousand twenty-one. So that's the good news.
The bad.
I mean, it's, I mean, the other is just straight news, not good or bad, but I mean. Since two thousand six, King Williams County shared the nine hundred fifty-nine dollars allocated by the state. For the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, the PPTRA is one point two million dollars. The share is used to offset the amount of relief the board approves when it sets the county's PPTRA relief rate. In two thousand twenty, based on the value of SaaS motorcycles, cars, trucks and vans, because that's what qualifies for the PPTRA. The former commissioner, Rob Newkay, calculated the percentage of, for PPTRA at thirty percent. The board of supervisors voted to set the rate at thirty-five percent. At the thirty-five percent rate, the amount of PPTRA relief provider is one point three six, one point three million dollars. Which was a hundred and sixty-two thousand more than the state's offsetting share. Since two thousand twenty, the county in town, in the county and the town, the number of motorcycles, cars, trucks and vans has increased by eight hundred and nineteen. From two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, the total assessed value of these items increased from a hundred and thirty-seven, nine hundred and sixty-five. Hundred and thirty-seven million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars to a hundred and fifty-nine million, seven hundred and sixty-six. Thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, thirteen point six percent increase. Of course, vehicles used for business do not qualify for PPTRA. And assessed values of vehicles over twenty thousand dollars does not, is not eligible for PPTRA. The total value of all the personal property increased from three hundred and forty-nine million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars to three hundred eighty-one million. Four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. This, this amount includes boats, business, personal property, mobile homes, RVs, machinery and tools. Machinery and tools increased by five point one million dollars, and the value of trucks increased by over sixteen million dollars. Okay, based on the King Williams PPTI allocation from the state, I calculated the PPTRA. TRA rate at thirty percent. If the board chooses to keep the rate at thirty-five percent, the amount of PPTR relief provider will be one million. Four hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is two hundred and eleven thousand, forty-eight dollars more than the state's share.
Right. Okay. So let's talk about a couple of things real quick, just so everybody, I can frame the conversation before we get started. PPTR in King William goes one hundred percent of the schools, all right, per the split levy legislation. What that means is that we cannot allocate additional money to PPTRA from the general fund. Without running afoul of split levy and owing West Point a pro-rata share. This kind of ties our hands. Last year, we voted to keep it at thirty-five percent in a discussion with Ms. Pearson, she thought that we were kind of skirting the edge between thirty and thirty-five to be good. And then we saw, you know, an explosion in car ownership and buyership last year that put us at the back, okay? So, I guess I'm saying this before if anybody starts asking if we can allocate additional money to, for this offset, the answer is yes, but. We will owe the town a pro-rata share of whatever we do allocate. So what that results in is, as vehicles increase in value and vehicle ownership and the number of vehicles in the county increases. Our ability to offset personal property tax decreases every year.
Did we do it last year because COVID?
Yes, and we were thinking that we were probably going to be okay, because we figured that COVID would mean that, you know, probably values would go down. You know, fewer people would be buying cars, et cetera, et cetera, and of course, the opposite proved to be. So we felt, you know, going into it, and I think anybody who was making that type of decision, you know, the middle. Or the early part of the pandemic in the middle of twenty twenty would have pretty, been pretty comfortable that it was the right call. To say that we should be good at keeping it at thirty-five percent, obviously, market forces, that still don't make sense to me. Made it, made it not the case, but I guess my point is, we don't really have a whole lot of option here when it comes to how we set this rate.
I can let you know, I did check with other localities, the PPTRA, R rate in Essex is thirty-four percent. King and Queen is forty-four percent. Carolyn County is only twenty-seven percent, and New Kent is thirty-one point nine percent.
Right, and King and Queen can allocate money from the general fund to keep their PPTRA at forty-four, forty-five without running afoul of a split levy legislation.
So.
So that's the biggest thing, because I get asked this question all the time, how come King and Queens are forty-five, we're, you know, because when we started, we were, we were at fifty, I think. And then it's just steadily, just gone down.
I mean, I did include in your, including your packet, the allocation module. So, like in two thousand, two thousand seven, it was forty-three percent. And then, in two thousand ten, it went up to forty-five percent, then it was at forty percent, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. It was at thirty-five percent, you know, two thousand twenty, so, you know, as county grows, the shares stays the same. So you have to think the count.
They haven't increased the local allocation at state levels since.
Yeah.
Those states, I guess.
Is an alternative lowering the personal property tax rate somewhat?
Yes, yes, that, that is possible, you know, if we're seeing that, you know, revenue projections values are coming in, you know, way, way high, we could adjust that rate. Cannot allocate more to the fund.
Like, if you lower the personal property tax rate, though, it's on, you know, everything, machinery and tools, boats, RVs.
So.
So, I mean.
It's, it's a complicated, multifaceted.
Yeah, if you lower the personal property tax, people are still going to pay a lot for their car, you know.
Well, and, and you know, there's also, I mean, it's a consumer's tax.
Yeah.
You know, the, the more expensive a thing is, the more you pay, so. You know, in that way, it could be seen as a somewhat progressive tax, but at the same time, you know, because it, vehicles do essentially age out of it or value out of it at a certain point, too, so.
And also, King and Queen, they, we use part of the PPTRA for all vehicles a thousand dollars or less. Don't pay any tax.
Right.
And King and Queen, they do tax vehicles less than a thousand dollars.
Right, and their relief rate is higher, but their rate is higher, we're three sixty-five therefore, so.
I mean, so a seven hundred dollar car in King and Queen is going to pay, I don't know, maybe twenty dollars, and.
Still.
That same car in King William won't pay any.
It's impossible to compare apples to apples, and I have people trying to do it all the time, to complain about, well, I only paid this much where I came from, and I'm paying more here. Well, they have different models and where they do it, and you could literally move to, you know, Caroline and pay more.
That is true.
Was there, did you come up with the factor that maybe just changing it a little bit, they know, because boats and everything else would go up, but. Personal ratio, that would maybe a half a percent or a third of a percent that would make it, so it would give us more evenness rather than such. The large increase, or if we didn't come up with anything like.
Right, I guess the, the question is, is the calculation more fine than thirty percent, is it like thirty-one point two eight, or is it, you know?
Let me see.
But still, it can't go up, so.
Well, we, we, you, you're right, but if the calculation is feasible, we could.
Actually, it's very close, I mean, you get one point, one million, two hundred and four thousand dollars from the state. At thirty percent, we're spending one million, two hundred and two thousand dollars, so I mean, it's pretty right on at thirty percent.
So anyways, other than the history lesson, I feel like I've accomplished very little. Anyway, so, you know, we've, we've got this here, I've demonstrated that we don't have really any options on it here. So I guess I'll entertain a motion on resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five, saving PPTRA for FY. Yeah, at thirty percent, thirty percent rate.
I'll move that we set it at thirty percent.
So we have a motion to adopt the resolution. Move Mr. Garber's second agreement, we're good, all right, any discussion? I've talked it out, Ms. Branch. Ms. Bankeroff, changing the due date for tangible personal property, thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so first up, I would like to propose the process of getting a personal property date changed, first probably due date change. From December the fifth to January fifteenth, and so I believe you have in your packet, as far as like what we currently have. As far as their obligations, and that changing the date would not impact our obligations. However, I do feel it would help citizens satisfy their tax obligations better, easier, that if it's moved to January fifteenth. Because real estate taxes are due at the same time, the second half, and some citizens may receive bonuses. Or most citizens would receive possibly one, two or three paychecks by the time January fifteenth gets here. So I, I understand the process is that we would, it's an ordinance change. And we have to have public hearings, so we also have to advertise in the paper two weeks, and so we could have that done by. September the fifteenth and September the twenty-second, and then public comments. And then by the next board of supervisors meeting on nine twenty-seven, we could potentially have a vote to go ahead and have that changed, to be effective immediately.
Is it, is it an option to maybe make that twice a year? I know Stephen admitted that earlier.
We're going to keep it twice a year, like, I just wanted to move the December one to January and keep the. I'm sorry.
This is personal property.
Yeah, this is just personal property, I'm not talking about real estate, yes, just personal property.
Is it possible to do that twice a year?
We could look at doing that.
Public hearing, I'd like to even look at monthly, because that way, like to all a lot of the other counties, that way you don't have the people that buy something January first. Or what they own on January first, they sell it December thirty-first, and then they don't have to pay taxes at all, and then you can work the system.
Right.
Other counties, that's appropriate, so that's, that's, that's a different. Thing that we've talked about.
Yeah, well, that's what I've been trying to do, to get a schedule conversation.
Would that, could it be included, or is that some?
I haven't looked into all of that, but I just wanted to try to get some immediate relief this year for the folks, especially with COVID and jobs, layoffs and stuff like that. I think that would really help out to start with.
Right, I, I'm fine with this, but prorating is something that we still are interested in talking.
Yeah, absolutely.
We know you got a lot going.
Yeah.
So.
So could we look at twice a year, if we're going to have a public hearing anyway? Could we look at twice a year payment for the personal property?
We could probably do that, mm-hmm, at least twice a year, yeah, we could just decide on the January and then perhaps like a July, if you want to split it.
Okay, so do we want to then bring this back to the work session?
I can look at, do, do we still want to go ahead and do the paper ads on the fifteenth and the twenty-second and do the public comments?
Well, I think we need to spell out what we're going to change in the ordinance in those advertisements.
Yeah, we can go ahead and say we'll change the due dates to twice a year, if we want to do that.
Okay, well, then I guess, yeah, let's say this, so let's go ahead and approve the advertisement, if it is possible to do the due date twice a year, advertise it with twice a year. If it is not possible to do it twice a year, advertise what you have, okay?
Have you looked at the labor delta of twice a year?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Have you looked at the labor delta, the amount of additional labor, like going to two times a year?
I don't.
I'm, I'm interested in how much additional labor would be involved in twice a year versus current, once a year.
To bill personal property twice a year. I have to have the personal property bill booked down by September first. And so that's to be due by December fifth. If I was to do two personal property tax books, it would require, yes, a lot of, an additional person.
Does it require two bills?
Right now, we do one bill for personal property.
It could be one, one bill with two due dates, isn't that currently how we handle real estate? Yeah.
I would still, the personal property tax bills, I can't have them prepared before September first, so what would you make the two due dates?
This is going to postpone that September book, though, this year.
No, by, by law.
No, by, by law, by state code, I have to have that book done September first. So that book is done September first. If you decide to bill it and have it due October fifteenth and January fifteenth, that's y'all.
Let's simplify that, this whole thing. Let's go ahead and advertise the ordinance revision to do January fifteenth due date, and then we can revise the ordinance next year if it's possible and doable and, and we all agree to it.
Yeah.
But let's go ahead and just keep it simple this year, since we're already late in the year. Let's not, let's not throw too many. Okay?
Yeah, okay, so we'll stick with the proposal of just January fifteenth. All right, so we will get that going. All right, so my next item is, um, I'd like to make a request. For the following from the Amazon funds. An additional expenditure was incurred for the assistance from, uh, Count Taps, a Robert Half Company and Reconcile in the Kingdom County, Virginia. Bank records, um, I'm estimating, uh, approximately eighteen thousand two sixteen eighteen. I did not budget for this, um, in reconciling the bank records. As you know, I just came on fourth February, so I was not, um, aware of the extent of the effort that it would take. It's been very difficult getting the documentation needed. Um, I have had a gentleman work in since about July. End of July on this diligently, and we do anticipate that he should be able to have this completed, um, by the end of September. He's making very good progress.
Good. No comment in the packet from staff on this? Are we, we good to do this?
We're good to do this.
Okay, all right, well then we've got resolution twenty-one dash sixty-seven appropriating an amount that we estimate to be eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Chairman recommend approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-seven second.
Second and any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hudgens, anything, uh, that you want to highlight in the administrative matters?
No further comment.
Board comments, we'll start with Mr. Hudson.
The only thing I really had come up or had brought to me was going back to the boat rant. And there is some interest according to this, this particular person. That the state would, would be interested in taking over and maintaining. And I just for future discussion, I think, well, they look to look at if they are willing to do that. That's about all I.
All right. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you everybody for coming. Looks like that's a little less than normal, a few less people online, but thanks everybody for coming. I wanted to reiterate, like you said, the, the far cheek, well. Said that COVID seems to be coming back. All the people that are vaccinated, thank you very much. If you're indoors in any kind of a building, I would suggest just a little health advisor also does to mask up anyway, if you're vaccinated or not. If you're not vaccinated, I would urge that you please do to help the rest of us. I mean, it's not a political thing, so. It's becoming that, but anyway, that's all. Put my two cents in. Thanks everybody for coming and, uh, everybody, I don't think we're going to have another meet before Labor Day, so everybody have a nice Labor Day.
Mr. Moore?
Oh, really, nothing, um, as, as most of us, I think all of us are excited about the All Points Project. That is what that, that application will be doing September fourteenth. It's electronically. Accomplished, so we hope everything will be ready to go by then. Just not that the county government can influence anything over half the world away, but please keep what's going on in Bagram, Afghanistan, in your awesome prayers. To say that's a mess is, uh. One of the understatements of the year. Having been in that area, worked that, that effort back in two thousand four, I feel sorry for those people. They're good people. So hope, hope things work out for the best.
Ms. Gar.
Well, everybody touched on everything that I was going to say, but. I too worried about the people in Afghanistan. They're good people. We made promises to some of the natives there. We need to. Try, try to get them out there and pray that they, they get out of there. And COVID also. Get your shots. I mean, it's, we will find ourselves wearing masks or even worse, so. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's good to see y'all.
Very good. I'll just restate what I've been saying all along. Take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Uh, and every time I say it, it's more important than ever. So, uh, I look forward to seeing you all again in a couple of weeks. Uh, we have a meeting to begin a closed session, which I believe Mr. Warren will read into the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, and according to section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board supervisors convene in a closed meeting to consider a personnel matter, including. Involving the public contracts to discuss the terms or scope of the public contract.
What about personnel?
Yeah, it's not checked, but I think it's also, it's also a point.
Right, well, it should just be thirty-seven eleven A one, personnel discussed.
Yeah.
Appointment of professionals.
Yeah, anything, check.
It is on the second page, but not on the first page.
What is?
Here it is.
Okay, to discuss the appointment of individuals to board's conventions and prospective candidates for employment.
Okay, all right. Need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. We're in a closed session. We'll return in a bit. All right. We're going to strike fourteen A. We're going to do that next month for the work session. All right. The motion to reconvene in open session.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi, we are in open session. Can I get a motion to adopt SR one? Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi, if there is no opposition, I will, uh, table item fourteen A to the work session. Hearing none, item fourteen A is table. Need a motion to adjourn? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. We're adjourned. Uh, they were there by the door.